Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Eliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 8th Meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kokowski has the dog for today.
Thank you very much.
I didn't even see it when I came in. It must be a real little one.
Oh, it's very, very cute, Betty. You're gonna like him.
Oh, yeah.
He's very cute. He's a...what is he? He's a spaniel, a cocker spaniel, and I should know that because I had a cocker spaniel growing up and her name was Taffy, so she didn't have the spots, but she had this taffy color. Come here, baby. It's very cute. She was found in Amherst about five...he was found in Amherst. He's about five years old, but you can come down on Saturday and pick him up from our dog pound and probably have a lottery for him because he's so darn cute. But he would make your pet a family pet and he'd make everybody very happy and he's very inexpensive to make them very happy at the holidays, so come down to our dog pound, see what we have available.
I have a thought for today, and I have used this before, but I like it, so I'm going to repeat it. It says, "Our days are identical suitcases, all the same size, but some people can pack more into them than others. Be very careful, then, how you live, not as unwise, but as wise, making the most of every opportunity." If you picked up an agenda, it outlines what is going to occur at 10 o'clock, but we are going to go to page two at the bottom, under B, for Resolutions, and do our regular board business. So, Madam Clerk, if you'd start.
Sure. Job and Family Services?
Us. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
There are no advances for today. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Okay. Number nine, author-
There is no personnel summary sheet.
Oh, there's no.
I have it. It's blank and the Board has discussed, and we are not going to have an executive session today because Jerry says he doesn't need one and our Administrator is at a conference on workforce development, so we are skipping number nine.
Okay. Number 10. Approve and waive the reading of the same for the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes of December 1, 2010.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Number 11. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county auditor.
Lisa Hobart, our Budget Director, will just identify what we're doing with this item.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is just because the Children's Services Levy had expired and it was coming up on the ballot in November, the Budget Commission took it off and because it passed, they put it back on, so it's just approving them with their rates back on.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you. Questions for Lisa? Also move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number 12. Authorized payment in the amount of $1,000 to Boyer &amp; Cool Home for Funerals in Lorraine for indigent veteran Sammy Slouver in accordance with ORC 5901.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Number 13. Amend Resolution Number 10-521, adopted on July 28th of 2010, approving and entering into a lease agreement with the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce for 1,506 square feet of finished office space located on the 5th floor of the Lorraine County Administration Building. Said amendment is to reflect the rent cost to be in-kind and retroback to October 15 of '09.
So moved.
Second.
Well, we did kinda have a slight conversation about the in-kind rent space on the 5th floor and I think having the Chamber of Commerce...oh, look, Ron Twining. Hi, Ron Twining. I didn't expect to see you here. What a pleasant surprise.
It's an empty seat.
Oh, you wanna sit up here?
It's an empty seat, Ron.
No? I'm sorry. I got...lost my train of thought and I saw you sitting out there. And I think having the Chamber of Commerce on the 5th floor is absolutely a great thing and having them as in-kind, I don't have a problem with, but I wasn't aware of the retroback to October of '09 and wondering why or have they been not paying?
I believe it's a shortfall in their budget, Commissioner, and to balance the books, we need to make it an in-kind versus paying.
All the way back to '09?
Yeah, it's the past budget.
Hmm. Like, I have no problem starting going forward for this year, but I was not aware of we were retroing it back to '09.
Apparently, they've had a problem in the past.
Well, there's...it's never been brought to my attention until late yesterday when I got this add-on to the agenda, so...
I thought it was brought up a while back. We had issues with those upstairs.
I didn't know anything about them not paying their rent since '09.
And that is correct, is it not, Lisa? It's not been paid.
It has not been paid?
No. And I did talk to Frank. It told me it was gonna be on the agenda today, but I don't know.
He called me yesterday, but he...and he's, you know, said, you know, he'd appreciate the fact that I would support the fact, you know, the in-kind, but never retroactive, so...
These were the directives from the Administrator that-
Okay. That's my comments.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
No.
Number 14. Approve 2011 Temporary General Fund Budget.
This has been given to the Commissioners. Do you want to give a brief overview of this, Lisa, since it's your handiwork?
Good morning.
What you have in front of you is 2011 budget at a 5% cut to the salary and PRS accounts. This is with the exception of the following departments: the Workforce Development Department, the Building Inspection, Prosecutor 4D and 4E, Domestic 4D, Municipal Court, and Veterans. And those are cut out because obviously we cannot cut the Veterans' budget, and the rest of those are self-funding. They take in fees and they cover their budget, so therefore they are not cut.
They are a wash.
Correct. This budget also includes the following adjustments: $700,000 to cover the increase in hospitalization, $60,000 to the Common Police Professional Services account, which enables them to make payments for experts, for interpreters, and such mandated expenses that we have to pay for indigents. $1,000 or $153,090 to the Prosecutor and Domestic 4D to bring them up to the current contract amount, and I think I discussed with one or all of you that, once the new contracts come out for 2011, if they do come in at less, we will draw some of those funds back, but right now, we're just trying to make them whole. We are also covering the One Employee in Tax Map, which we found out we have to have that, so we're covering that. There are some settlement deduction accounts that are held within the Auditor's line items that when the settlements are settled through the Tax Settlement Department, it's a gross effect and then they take out the charges, so that's something that we have to pay, so we're making that whole. We did get an amount from, as you know, the State Auditor's Office. We'll be performing our audit for the year 2010. There's $37,499 additional for that cost on top of what we normally paid, and I can tell you really quickly what we paid last year on that. Last year, we paid $110,000, so this year, it went up to $147,499. We also set aside $250,000 additional for the jail. If the sales tax trend decides to go down, we do have a little bit of money there to help them out if needed, and an additional $159,331 to the Veterans at Commissioner Kokowski's request. That brings our budget for 2011 to $48,863...sorry, $48,863,389. With that, I'll answer any questions. I've got the summary sheets.
When you said at Commissioner Kokowski's request, I did ask you to add that on.
Absolutely.
And it's not per my request.
No.
It's per their budget request, and according to Jerry Ennis, we do not have the ability to revise, only review their budget, and they asked for additional dollars this year, and we obviously, we don't have a choice in the matter.
Correct.
So we had to give them what they asked for.
And one thing to add to that, Commissioner, is also with the Memorial Day expenses, there's been a lot of discussion. That has been taken out of their budget and it's been placed in one of our accounts because we handle those payments, so that is no longer included in their budget.
Correct.
Well, and this budget is actually about a million and a half dollars more than the 2010 budget, even with the 5% tax cuts.
Correct. Because of all of the adjustments that we had to make.
I mean, because of the budget cuts, I'm sorry. Might as well talk about, while we're talking, that myself and Commissioner Blair were in Columbus. I was there Sunday and Monday for association meetings for the county Commissioners, and we had the opportunity on Monday morning to meet with the new Finance Chairman of the State Senate, Chris Widener, and they gave us a breakdown of state government, where the money comes from and the shortfalls, and where we won't have any more one-time money between tobacco money and stimulus dollars. And they passed out a sheet of paper, Center for Community Solutions, on where possible cuts could go to balance the state budget, and it doesn't look like anything's being unscathed. Let's see, which piece of paper do we have this on?
Several.
I have a bunch of them. Yeah, they gave us a boatload of paperwork.
It's the third sheet in.
Yeah. Yeah, I've got that one. I was looking for the other one where they started out with...where's this cover sheet at? I wouldn't be talking about this to my report, but might as well do it now. Well, I can wing it because I can't find it on the paper. Here we go. What we must do to achieve a fiscally stable Ohio...this is again from the Finance Chairman. He starts out why jobs are important, but reprioritizing the budget for state service corrections, and in one point, they want to downsize our prison population by about 10%, and I'm sure Sheriff Stomidi's here, he can talk about that, the concerns we have with that, and I've talked to the prosecutors about those people rolling back down to us. Workers' compensation. State of Ohio is one of two states who do it as a government entity. The other 48 states do it privately. The new administration said that is a priority of theirs to change that, changing the way economic development is done, no additional taxation, and a lack of leadership, but that was their concerns and where they want to go directly, but we have the Center for Community Solutions who put together a plan, and I don't know who's in charge of this group, but it did come out. In one of their scenarios of balancing the budget with the approximately $7 or $8 billion shortfall was a total elimination of municipal government distribution from local government funds. They talked anywhere from a 10% cut, a 15% cut, a 20% cut, a total phase-out over two years, which would be a 50% cut, and Lorraine County's about $4.5 million a year, Lisa. Rough numbers on our local government fund revenues?
Projected for 2010 is $4,677,000.
Okay, close enough to $4.5 million. So anywhere that there is a cut, that is from 10%, which would be about half a million dollars, up to a total elimination, everyone's looking for a lot of pain. We have in our budget taken $1 million in savings and moved to a rainy day account, figuring that we're going to look at some type of cut. In the 5% cut, though, the discussion has been, we're giving an option to the departments under the General Fund. The Commissioners last year implemented, with all our non-bargaining employees, basically the nine-hour workday, eight hours work, no paid breaks, hour unpaid lunch, which is different than all of government normally has done in the past, trying to get 13% more production out of the employees we have. Commissioner Blair has some numbers that shows the amount of employees that were down, what are short, you know, actually what we're operating with and what we have in the past. So, I mean, I don't know if Commissioner Blair wants to join in on that, but we are looking at some very hard decisions coming up. That's why we're having a sales tax hearings. Whether they get implemented, imposed, or passed on, it's still discussion points that have to be looked at, so, I mean, we're looking at a very difficult 2012, not knowing what the state's doing. Yeah, there you go, the total employees, the shortfall, and then the sheet Lisa put together. So, as we look at this budget, I don't think anybody's happy with it.
Nope.
And we're looking for all the cost savings we possibly can. Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate you putting this together. Did you comment on the Criminal Justice Funds, our carryover from the last sales tax, where those are being appropriated to?
Yes. We will be giving $4.5 million set aside for the jail, to help fund the jail, and for the prosecutor, it will be approximately $2,195,000, and that does include a 5% cut to them as well because they are General Fund Department. That will fall over into the Criminal Justice Funds next year.
Well, it has been discussed. I mean, the public is asking government to do more with less, and one way that we thought is the best way of doing that is by increasing productivity, like Commissioner Kahlo had said, eight hours work for eight hours of pay is a 13% increase in productivity, but it does not affect a person's paycheck. I mean, people have bills that they need to pay, so they're still receiving the same amount of money, but we're getting more productivity and getting more work done, and that's what I think the people in this community are asking of their elected officials. Kinda discussed that possibility of the 5% cut across the board to all the departments other than the ones that Lisa had mentioned that are not...that can't be cut, that don't need to be cut because they are a wash. If those departments would be willing to go to the eight hours work, eight hours pay for the employees that they have control of, I mean, no, we have collective bargaining agreements that we can't affect those and some, I don't know, maybe some civil service. You'll have to ask Jerry about that. People that we may not be able to implement that on, but not cutting them by the 5% if they were willing to go to the eight hours work, eight hours pay.
Other comments? If not, I will move for approval of item number 14 as presented to us.
Is that including the...offering the departments the 5% or the not cutting the 5% if they go to eight hours work? I think my department's plan is we're gonna do our best to get these worksheets out to the elected officials no later than tomorrow. They will have both options. It will show their 2011 budget with the 5% cut. It'll show their 2010 budget with the freeze, and as we get the responses back on what they want to do, I'm sure the elected officials are gonna want to discuss with the Board. We can make revisions to this budget.
Not noting that this is a living document.
Absolutely.
It is a living document, and we are also only passing a quarterly budget, not a yearly budget, correct?
Correct. This is a temporary. It will be distributed on a quarterly basis.
Salaries, but the rest of this is-
Salary and PRS. Everything else will go in the first quarter.
Okay.
You gotta make the second.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, number 15. Authorized purchase of service agreement with 715 Jacox Road Development Limited in Lorraine for human resource consultant services effective January 1 of 2011 through December 31 of 2011 in an amount not to exceed $80,000. Authorized director to execute and amend for changes in programming on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just wanna say, for the record, this is not a General Fund Department. Mary Lugolski is the Director over Job and Family Services, and she basically makes the decisions for that organization. We are co...what's the word, Jerry?
Co-authoring.
Co-authory, appointing authority, so it's not really up to the Commissioners as to whether this is a good idea, but they did get three bids and this was the lowest bid, so...
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number 16. Approve and enter into a plan for expenditure of funds allocated by Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for state fiscal year 2011. Lorraine County received $298,851.30 as an allocation from the 600-533 accounts and will spend on child support activities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Prosecutor Treasurer, number 17. Accept and generalize the delinquent real estate tax collection appropriation and expenditure report as submitted by the Lorraine County Treasurer and the Lorraine County Prosecutor pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321-261 for the year 2010. Revenue generated for 2010 was $682,268.42, and 2011 estimate of anticipated revenue will be approximately $680,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez is attending a conference for workforce development. He's not here today. Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I just wanna give you a heads-up on a matter that's probably going to be brought to you in the next month or so. You own property where MRDD, former MRDD, now DD, is located. We entered into a lease with a private nonprofit company called Murray Ridge Housing Corporation. What they do then is on the property, construct a residential home for disabled people to come and stay there. Now, what they would like to do is sublease a suite in that area to people that become temporarily out of a home or something, and that's eventually going to come to you to need you to approve and allow them to go ahead and sublease. So I wanted to give you a heads-up on that and just see if you had any reservations about it. It's a good way for, you know, they have the home there, but they need a portion of that to be able to be used for people that are temporarily, don't have a place to stay.
What kind of action do you need from this Board, I think?
Well, we will be coming in the next couple of months with the way the lease is written up to this company. If they're going to sublease, they need to get the Commissioners' approval, and before we started all the paperwork, I just wanted to see if Commissioners had any concerns or reservations about doing that.
I have none.
Okay. That's all I had then, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jerry.
Other than to note that Mr. Twining looks a lot happier back there.
Yeah. He's very rested.
Very peaceful.
Okay.
Commissioners' report?
Not much of a report. I'm anxious to get to our public hearing here, but I do want to say that we had a very nice alliance meeting on Friday, Betty's last alliance meeting, official. I'm sure she'll be back, though, but it was very nice. Congresswoman Betty Sutton attended, and she gave a very nice talk about, what was it? Not deterioration, corrosion. Corrosion. So hopefully, she's gonna look for some money for bridges and roads and things like that that we desperately need here in Lorraine County, so that's the end of my report.
Not take a whole lot of time. I already commented on the County Commissioners Association. Very informative. I guess our sheriff was down there on Tuesday, but I had to get back here to work on budget issues, so I didn't get a chance to hear our sheriff speak to the County Commissioners. Also, on Monday, had the opportunity, I was in Columbus, we took a team from Leadco, the Lake Area Energy Development Corporation, the Offshore Wind Project, and met with Governor -elect Kaisich's policy team, explaining the benefits and why we need to continue to move forward even though they're looking at budget cuts, the importance to the job development, which is what Mr. Kaisich ran on. So I am hoping that everyone that showed up there was able to put a convincing argument on. I talked about the importance of Lorraine County in manufacturing. We build things and we're geared for this along with the ability to move product along the Great Lakes to fill the needs of the other states. He was in the water first winds, but we had a team from Leadco, Lori Wagner, Dave Karpinski from Nortech, Great Lakes Wind Energy, the team running this. We had the people from Bechtel there, the largest construction company in the country, Cavalo Energy, and Cliff Moore had one in Terbale, Lorraine County. Hello, he used to be our local first energy guy. Now, he's in charge of GE for the State of Ohio. He told me to tell Frank Tillio he said hello, so that's the end of my report.
It was an opportunity to meet some of the newly-elected state officials. John Houston, who is going to be the Secretary of State, now a Senator, addressed one of the sessions, and also the new Auditor of State was there. Maybe we should tell him that he's charging too much for his audit. I'm sure he cares.
Well, actually, he talked about doing less audits. They're gonna do a performance audit first, try and save everybody else money afterwards.
A great idea, but anyway, it was an opportunity and I had not...well, I knew Houston, but I didn't know the other gentleman, so it was nice to meet them and hear what was going on. I hit three sessions in two timeframes, so I didn't get all. And Monday, you people, including Commissioner Kahlo, who worked on those bylaws, et cetera, for the County Commissioners Association, spent a lot of time upgrading those things. I hope that the legislature listens to some of the recommendations that were made to them. The only reason I stayed was because they were gonna give me a plaque, and they gave them to a lot of people, and I thought first they were gonna give them an alphabetical order. Blair sounded like a good beginning while they passed that by. Then I thought maybe they were gonna give them alphabetical order by the county. Well, that passed by, so I was the very last one, and by that time, everybody was a little happy, so...
I think they forgot you, Commissioner. I just sent a note up there.
They did not. I was the last one because mine had the most years of service. That was why I was last, absolutely. The other guy who had more years of service wasn't there, so I got the distinction of being last. And our friend Ben Nutter from Zeneca County, who is an officer, came down to greet me together with our mutual friend Dan Troy from Lorraine, from Lake County. So this is the plaque. Anybody wants to look at it, Hal?
Here it is. After you've been there 20 years, you get one of these. Okay?
No watch?
I have my own watch. Remember, on time? I, I have my own watch. Remember on time? Wait a minute, I learned this. Early is on time, and on time is late from you. Well, you know, I'm a slow learner. Let's face it. So anyway, it was a nice conference, a, a lot to be learned, and I've appreciated the opportunity to attend on behalf of Lorain County. And it is now the bewitching hour of ten o'clock, so I would like to begin this, uh, public hearing. And I would like to say that, Jerry, do we have to read all of the, uh, se- sections that are identified?
You want to move Board correspondent?
Oh, yes.
Did you want to do that?
Yes, I would. I move we, uh, uh, waive the reading of Board correspondents.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla, Ms. Kokowski?
Thank you very much. Okay, we're got a clean slate now. Do we have to, uh, read that, Jerry?
No, we don't have to read them at this point.
Okay, thank you. For those of you who picked up an, an agenda, it's, uh, identified, uh, the purposes that we are holding this hearing for, and, and we are holding them because that is what is required of the Ohio Revised Code, and we are creatures of statute, and we function by virtue of what the legislature has defined as our purpose. So, having said that, um, uh, two things I'd like to say. There was a green sheet in the bag. Uh, first were some suggestions by one of the newspapers about how the commissioners should, uh, proceed to save money, and attached to that, as compiled by our Budget Director, Lisa Hobart, were in fact some of the areas that we have, together with our department heads and elected officials proceeded to, in fact, save money. So it isn't that we've been sitting here, uh, doing nothing. We have been doing a variety of things in the past two to three years to, uh, address the situation which we were aware of was coming, and we have acted, uh, I think with, uh, care in, uh, seeing that we were not left holding the bag, so to speak. Um, Ted mentioned being down at the state and hearing from the state, and what was interesting to me was that, uh, the one speaker, the Chair of the Finance Committee, he indicated that he felt the state had done nothing to address their shortfall. Well, let me tell you, we here in Lorain County have done something. Now, has it been enough? Well, you listen, you read, and then you decide for yourself. We have, uh, adopted a little numbering system. If you wish to speak and tell us what you think, we're here to listen, and, but you have a number, and you're asked to put your name, address, and telephone number on that sheet, and I'm going to call your number, and when I do, I'm asking you to come here, give me your number, and then you will, uh, address the podium from here. So who has the distinction of being number one? Uh, is there anybody who has number one? Number one wins a door prize.
Number one gets a dog. The little cocker spaniel taffy is yours on Saturday.
Is there no number one?
This is number five. This is five.
Okay, we'll go to number two, then. Who has number two? Anybody? Moving on down, we're not gonna waste your time. Number, number two?
Number three.
That, that, as a woman of action. May I have your slip?
Good morning, Kirsten. How you doing?
Thank you very much. This is Kirsten Hall. You're on.
Actually, it's Kirsten Hill.
Sorry? Well, I used to know how to read.
That's okay. Um, I just have, uh, one short thought for you to, um, uh, consider. The, uh, I work in the, um, in the private sector, so, um, I, I, uh, can't imagine the amount of challenges you have with a forty-eight million dollar budget. Uh, you have, uh, demands coming, uh, out of Washington, out of Columbus, um, as well as from the local, um, public, uh, cities and townships within the county, and, you know, you have to sort of match up the amount of money you have and the amount of demands coming from all those places. Well, it's similar, but on a smaller scale than my little business, and, uh, I have to, um, you know, be careful about how to spend that money. Um, but really, my, my main thought, and it's just a short one, is to think about the public sector versus the private sector, and looking at, um, where that money can more efficiently be used, because if the sales tax at the estimate that was in the Chronicle Telegram article, um, that was gained, or, or that was raised was fourteen million dollars, um, over the one-year period, that's fourteen million dollars that the individuals in the county and the small business, businesses in the county, um, don't have in their pocket to use to make efficient decisions. So which is more efficient use of that fourteen million? Can it be done, um, as efficiently in the public sector as in the private sector? And that's, that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtful question. Um, number four. Good morning, Deborah. This is Deborah Neville from the LEAP office on North Ridge Road.
Commissioner Blair and Commissioner Kayla and Commissioner Kokowski, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak, uh, about, uh, the need for increased revenue in, in the county. Uh, we have not taken a position on meaning LEAP or the Lorain County, uh, Transportation Coalition, of which we have helped bring together on the issue of what would be the best way to get additional revenue for the county. But what I want to focus my brief comments on is the crucial unmet need in the area of public transportation. And we know that there have been significant cuts that you have had to make, uh, in transportation, and we just want to talk a little bit about that and bring that to your attention as you think about what you need to do in order to meet the critical needs of this county. Our organization is LEAP, Linking Employment Abilities and Potential. We're really a social service enterprise that itself employs eleven employees, and most of them are Lorain County residents, and, uh, seven of those are full-time and four are part-time. Uh, we work with residents of Lorain County in two major areas. The first being developing employment skills, helping people be job-ready, be able to go into the, uh, employment market, and then to, uh, become more self-sufficient. And along with that, we, uh, provide independent living skills to help with that transition. Uh, one of the biggest barriers to self-sufficiency for persons with disabilities is transportation. Without public transportation, they, people that we serve, uh, don't have the deep pockets often to have their own transportation. They're very creative in terms of job or travel sharing, and, um, I think do the best they can. But we frankly find we cannot place people in jobs because we do not have transportation. They cannot get there, they cannot get there at the times that they're required. And so in some ways, this is really an economic development issue, both for the people that we're talking about who want to be part of, um, contributing, paying taxes, being part of the Lorain economy, and for the employers. Um, even in good times, this is a barrier for the people that we serve. But currently, the unemployment, the latest government figures for November of two thousand and ten shows that of the persons with disabilities over the age of twenty-one who can work and who want to work, only twenty-one point five percent of those people are employed. And that, um, we know that in these bad times, uh, sixty-nine point eight percent of the non-disabled are employed. So there really is a barrier that needs to be addressed collectively by this community, and one of the major barriers is the lack of transportation and how that impacts on people who are transportation-dependent. As I mentioned earlier, I do, uh, we did help to convene a group called the Lorain County Transportation Coalition, and our goal is to work with Lorain County residents and with you as the county commissioners, as our elected officials, to try to work on a solution, because what we really need is affordable, accessible, and adequately funded public transportation, both on the federal, the state, and the local level. Getting specific monies, but I notice none of the proposals do talk about a designated funding stream, you know, in the proposals you're looking at. But I think to put more money into the general revenue and to raise the public will to see transportation as an economic development issue, as well as an issue of justice for people in the community, is something we would offer ourselves to work with you on, to educate the community and to build that kind of public awareness of why it's important that Lorain County have an efficient and a system that serves all of its citizens. So thank you for your time.
There, there is, uh, I believe a hundred, at least a hundred thousand dollars going towards our transit, which is matched by the Transportation FTA. Um, goodwill is, has got Goodwheels running around the county right now, which is helping out a lot. Um, Oberlin has stepped up and has, uh, offered the help, you know, in these, in these tough times. Um, most, uh, areas do have their own dedicated tax for transportation system, and Lorain County does not.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, we do have some money going towards it in, in better times, and, um, if, if there were, uh, additional taxes in the future, um, that would be something that I'm sure this board and any future board would definitely want to beef up our, our transit system back to where it was and even better than it was.
Yes, Commissioner Kokowski, you're absolutely correct that there is no local, you know, dedicated revenue stream in this county. And I'd really encourage you to think about that in terms of the ways that you can draw down other dollars. There's money that we leave on the table.
Absolutely.
On the state level and the federal level.
That's the problem and the issue from my point of view.
From the state?
Yeah, because we don't have adequate local match.
Right.
In order to do that. Now, I think there are some creative things being done in the county, and I was just at a, an event where we were talking about, how do we, maybe we need to do more ride-sharing. Maybe we need to have, um, a coordinator, mobility coordinator at the county level that helps tap the resources that exist. We're in a tough time.
We are.
We need to bring all the resources, but we also need to think about the future.
Right.
Okay.
Our, our job really, I mean, we're here to fund county government, and the majority of our funding, over seventy percent, goes to the justice system, and that's our job. I mean, the fact that we were in better times, able to provide the transportation is an awesome thing, and once people get used to having that, when it's gone, they're like, you know, what are you gonna do about it? But the problem is, there's only so many dollars to go around, unfortunately, and that's one of the things. We have to, we have to focus on our mandated issues first and then prioritize the rest after that, and we definitely don't want to shut down transit altogether, and we call it, we've been calling it a warm idle, just to keep it running, so that when times do get better, that we can, um, get it back up and running to serve our citizens.
I just want to point out, and I said this before, the last round of funds that ODOT, uh, created and made available, because Lake County had dedicated funding, they got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Lake County is about the same size as Lorain County, but since we didn't have a dedicated source of funding, from that particular pot of money, we got nothing.
Right.
That's just not kosher, as far as I'm concerned. Deborah, I'll work with you any way I can.
Okay.
Now or later. Thank you so much.
Thank you for hearing me.
Number five. Do you have the?
I have the card.
Okay. This is Phil Copeland with his lovely wife. Her name isn't on the list, but it ought to be.
Lois.
Thank you, Lois.
I want to thank you, Commissioners, for giving me a chance to talk about my concerns about, also about public transportation. I'm also with the Lorain County Coalition Steering Committee, and I've been a longtime advocate for passenger rail and public transportation. And, uh, I also want to thank Mrs. Blair for her support for the West Shore Commuter Rail System, uh, in the past, and, uh, hopefully in time that will be a reality. Uh, I think, uh, I've heard the talk about revenue, a very, very, uh, obviously important issue, and, uh, I'd like to talk about what I'd like to see if the revenue does become available. And, uh, before I do, I am a consumer, by the way, of the Dollar Ride service for several years, uh, when my good wife was unable to transport me, and, uh, it's been excellent. The service is fantastic, but it's been cut back till ending at five o'clock in the afternoon, uh, which creates some problems when I work evenings in my practice. I think it's important to have, uh, the frequency, uh, of, uh, schedules for the fixed route buses, as well as having more Dollar Ride buses. I know that, um, there was comment about keeping, um, the system going by having at least, uh, two-hour headways, but my concern is that if we continue to have that long a headway between bus schedules, and I think there's, I believe there's no weekend service, uh, people are going to stop depending on the transit system, and I'm afraid that, that's going to come down to, well, nobody's riding it, so we don't really need it. And, uh, that's a big concern of mine, but I, you know, at the same time, I understand the financial, the, the revenue issues, and I hope the commissioners are able to find some sources of revenue for, uh, transportation. And, uh, I certainly, I spoke here many, few years back about transit, and as I said then, I want to see my tax dollars go into transit. I think it's a very important resource to have in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. Number six.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Megan Sheaf. I live at ninety-five East Vine in Oberlin, Ohio. Um, I, I, I listen to the statistics about the disabled people, that only twenty-some percent of able, working, uh, disabled or working. That is a crime. It, it's, it's, it's just horrible, and transportation is the only way most of us can get around. I understand that the funds are, uh, are, are sometimes not available. I understand that you have to make decisions, but unfortunately, even within the federal government, decisions are always made that don't somehow supply help to the most weak in our society. And I ask why? I think that, uh, I, I really want to say, I think that for me, as a disabled, retired woman, I get tired of having to ask people. It's humiliating. I lose my right to have independence. I have to ask, look, can you take me to IGA? Can you take me to the doctor? Yes, we do have some adequacy in Oberlin, very little, and thank goodness we have it. And if, if, if we can make the decision to do something about it, so can we. I am really concerned, very concerned, that because of the unemployment of the young, of the disabled, which is absolutely horrible, okay, discriminatory and horrible, I don't think the federal law has helped us a heck of a lot because of that nationally, I think we gotta make greater efforts. If you would decide that you want to put this on the ballot, I will work my heart out for it, and I will educate people. If there's a way to do this otherwise, I ask you to do it because we need it so desperately. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Megan. Number seven.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for the opportunity to, uh, to talk to you just for, very briefly this morning. I'm David Boyce. I'm the, uh, Program Director at Catholic Charities Family Center in the city of Lorain, and I'm here to, uh, to address the pr- transportation issue as well, but I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, Lorain County's most vulnerable citizens, uh, and that is particularly the men and women of St. Joe's Homeless Shelter, as well as, uh, the clients of the family center in Lorain. Um, a couple of issues which, um, I think where we have been really hit hard, um, by the lack of transportation are two things. Medical appointments, uh, our, our clients are not able to get to the appointments at, at Mercy Hospital or at, at various doctor appointments. I mean, we have bus tickets we can help them with, but if there's not a bus to go there, then they're not gonna be able to get to their doctor appointment, and that has proven to be a real, um, uh, barrier for a lot of people. Um, so the medical appointments is, is the one thing, but the second thing is also, um, this, this, the opportunity to, uh, become gainfully employed. Now, there's no secret about the fact that, uh, Lorain has been blindsided by the poverty rate that we have here, and, um, one of the ways to help move individuals out of that cycle of poverty is to, uh, help them get a job. Uh, we provide job We provide job search assistance at Catholic Charities, through the First Community Interfaith Institute. And as you know, Goodwill has a job search training program. But if there's not a way for the men and women to get to a job or get to an interview, well, they're going to be in trouble. And they're not going to be able to get to a job. We want to do everything we can to help the most vulnerable citizens in this community. And I think one of the ways that you can help is by trying to find ways to increase some of those bus routes, so these individuals can get to a job interview and to a job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Number eight.
Good morning. My name is Nadine Dumas. I live in Oberlin. As you can see, I'm legally blind. Help me keep my independence, please, by keeping a bus. I thank you for Monday and Thursday buses. It has really helped me a lot. There are so many of us, we don't want to ask always, give me a ride, can I go with you? We like to be independent. And I'm grateful for what you've done. But please, if there's any way at all, please give us a bus. Continue to give us a bus. When the bus stopped last February, I hit the ground many a times because I had to go to IGA, because that was about the only store that had everything I needed. So just, I'm trying not to get upset. But just picture yourself to leave your house without your car keys. No transportation at all, and you've got to try to walk where you can or ask somebody to take you. You don't want to do that. We don't want to do it either. So I thank you for listening to me. I know I should have said a lot more things. But please, please, if there's any way at all, please let Oberlin keep the buses they have, at least for Monday and Thursday. Now, thank you so much.
Thank you, Nadine. Number nine.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Valerie Hartnett. I live in Oberlin. All I can say, I am a single mom. My daughter gets up out of college, but I need a job. And before I can get a job, I need transportation. So that way I can help pay for her college education. If she decides to stay here to go to LCC, how will she get there? She's a very intelligent young girl. If you want to keep your skilled workers and your most educated young people, we need transportation. Without transportation, how will we survive? Many people are leaving Ohio to go to other states to work. I have a gentleman at Oberlin Boys and Girls Club that teach me Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays about computer. He's from Milwaukee. And he said last week, he said, no, Ms. Hartnett, I've been here for a few days. I didn't know your transportation was like that. I complain about Milwaukee every fifteen minutes. I came to Ohio, oh my goodness. See, even people from other states sees there's a problem here. We need transportation. If you want us to stay to work, to be employed, I could have had a job at Telco. I couldn't get there because I don't have transportation. I want to work. I think you guys know me, because I called you many times and left my messages for you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
I worked at May Credit. I couldn't work on a Sunday because I couldn't, the buses stopped working at two o'clock. I want to work. I need to be employed. I used to work at May Credit, Lorain Products. I want a job. And I cannot, I cannot continue to do this. It hurts my heart not to be able to work and provide for my daughter. And I don't like to do that. And I need to work to pay for her student loans, to pay for her college fees that's coming up in July. And it bothers me so much because I cannot provide for my child. And I'm not a lazy mother. I think you guys know that. I have worked many years in Lorain County. And I need help for my baby and I need help for myself. Because I just want to say that. But if you cannot help me, then we got to leave. And it's not fair for us to leave when you, I don't know what more to say. I think there is a way to provide transportation for everyone. We have to work together as a community. We must love one another, respect one another, no matter if you're poor, rich, or whatever the case may be. We all part of the human race. And you never know what might happen to each one of us. Just because we're on the top doesn't mean we'll be on the top forever. You look at the news, things are changing in America. And we have to stand together as American citizens and support one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Number ten.
My name's George Zeller. I live in Cleveland. So I'm from Cuyahoga County, not Lorain County. But I want to follow up on some of the eloquent testimony that we've heard from others here prior to me, all of which was very good. And I want to change the focus just slightly. We are here today discussing the biggest strategic issue facing Lorain County, the very number one strategic issue. All of the others, whatever you're spending money on, are less important. This is the biggest thing in the strategic future of Lorain County that we're discussing today, the transportation system. Now, the handout that I gave here, I serve on the Citizens Advisory Board at the Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority in Cleveland. That is the same handout that I distributed in testimony yesterday at the budget hearings at Greater Cleveland RTA. The reason I'm doing that, Lorain County and Cuyahoga County are the same city. There is no distinction between Lorain County and Cuyahoga County. We are all in the same region. Commissioner mentioned earlier, Lake County, if you take a look at Akron, Summit County, Portage County, Medina County, this is a region that we live in. We don't live in a bunch of individual fiefdoms. And so when you take a look at the future of Lorain County, the entire future of Lorain County, if it has any, it is on a regional basis. Now, what I brought here today, we had several people mention here in eloquent terms already, the dire economic situation that we're in. There is the latest figures, unemployment in every county in our region. I did not just bring the Lorain County figures because we're in a region. And you can see, looking at that chart there, our region and our state never recovered from the 2000 to 2002 recession in the national picture. And then 2007 to 2009, we had another very deep national recession, the worst one of all our lifetimes. And during that period of time, Lorain County lost 15,134 jobs. That was fourteen percent of all the jobs in Lorain County. That counts Oberlin, Alaria, Lorain, and the entire rest of the county. And as you can see, the rest of the county, region didn't do much better. In fact, Cuyahoga County, I'm sad to say, we did a little bit worse. But there was a dramatic decline in employment across this whole region. The second page shows the same figures, except for manufacturing jobs only. This is a manufacturing region, of course, it always has been. And take a look at those figures, they're mind-boggling. Over this same decade period that I've been discussing, here in Lorain County, we have lost thirty-seven point eight percent of all the manufacturing jobs. Those are the high-wage jobs in this county that have always supported all the rest of our jobs and the rest of the economy through the ripple effect. When you lose nine thousand of your, over nine thousand of your high-wage jobs, that has a devastating impact. Now, having said that, what has resulted is that Lorain County is increasingly not only the same region as Cuyahoga County, it is the same city as Cuyahoga County. You take a look at the growth that we've had here in Lorain County, the overwhelming majority of it lately has been over in the eastern part of Lorain County. You take a look at North Ridgeville, you look at Avon, Avon Lake, those are not Lorain County cities anymore. They are suburbs of Cleveland. And so how did that happen? We spent an enormous amount of money on new transportation out here to Lorain County. I drive down it myself. We had, all summer it was all dug up, as you know. We put a third lane on I-90 over there and drove it all the way out to, where does it end now, over by the stadium there. And then we also repaved 90 going the rest of the way east and out to Route Two and the Turnpike. That was an enormous amount of money that was invested in Lorain County. It was invested in Lorain County by the federal government and the state. Now, how much investment did those entities put into transportation and public transit, as we've just discussed here already? Nothing. Not a thing. And that is a disgrace. All these people are dependent on getting some transportation, and there was not one dime invested in that. But there was an enormous amount of money invested in extra freeway capacity so that people could get to Cleveland. That's the purpose of that road. That road is not a Lorain County road. That's so that people can drive into Cleveland. Now, we spent an enormous amount of money doing that, but in the meantime, we do not have a, I was at the Regional Transit Authority hearings yesterday in Cleveland. We do not have a regional transit authority in Cleveland. We never have had and still don't. It's a county transit authority. It is in Cuyahoga County only. There is no service to Lorain County by Greater Cleveland RTA. There used to be. There used to be a connection between the two, but that's been abandoned. So you have no regional transit on a public transit basis in this county. Now, Krishna Blair has been working hard. I know some of the others here in the county government have been working to try and get this new rail system built up. And it's in the preliminary design at the moment. But the future of Lorain County depends upon whether you establish a public transit system in this county, which you don't have. You have a bare bones system that you've already described here this morning. It almost disappeared entirely and is on life support at the moment. But if you don't figure out a means to fund the local share of a public transit system, Lorain County has no future. And you Commissioners have no future as individuals. This must be done. This is not an option. And you could see in these, the last two sheets that I distributed there, we looked over what happened over the last decade. These are figures from last week. Now, these figures here are the number of people that were laid off last week and who filed for an unemployment claim. Now, the reason I look at this is we're looking very desperately to see when this depression that we're in ends. And you can see right there, at a normal year, when we are growing, the last year Lorain County added jobs was 1999. That's a long time ago. And so it is normal, even when the economy is growing, to have 193 new unemployment claims this week of the year. There's always churning in the labor market. People are getting new jobs, they get laid off, they get a new job, new jobs are created. So it's normal to have 193. Last week, we had 466. That's 141 percent, more than double the normal level of unemployment claims in Lorain County last week. Now, this is based on your residents, not on where the jobs are, like those first two charts I talked about. This includes the people that are going, used to be going to work here in Lorain County, or that used to be going to work in Cuyahoga County, or wherever their job was. And if we, under these kind of economic circumstances, continue to fail to provide any transit service at all to Cuyahoga County, that's a death sentence to Lorain County. And you can't afford to do that. This must be done. This is the highest priority that Lorain County has, period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George.
Number eleven.
Good morning. I'm Allison Swaim. I wanted to speak on behalf of a lot of the citizens that I spoke with earlier in the fall in Oberlin. I was hired by the city to do a qualitative survey of the limited bus service that the city has been subsidizing this past fall to kind of give some sort of transportation to some of the residents who really depended on the buses. So I spoke to a lot of folks that rode the bus that they are offering now, but I just wanted to kind of share some of those, the stories that I heard from the citizens. It's great that we have a bus in Oberlin, but it's not enough. It helps people get to a store to get their medicine or to get their food, but it's not able to give people to their jobs. It's not, a lot of times people can't schedule a doctor's appointment on the days that it does run, and it's not, doesn't run along enough. So it's good to have something, but it's, we really need the buses back. Everyone I spoke to was asking, when's 21 going to be back? When are we going to have, you know, when are we going to get funding for this? I think a lot of other folks before me have said, made really good points, and I just wanted to come back to that. I think the transportation system really, like, is at the heart of all these other issues, even public safety and the economy. Like, if people can't get to their jobs, how are we going to get more tax revenue to have more money to have a bus in the first place? And I think, you mentioned before, Commissioner Karkowski, that there's not a dedicated source of funding. That's an issue. We can't just, I don't think it's, it's not okay that the bus, busing is reliable on a fluctuating pool of money. But whatever we can do in the meantime to get the buses as much, back up to as much as we can, I think we really need to do it. Because otherwise, the county's going to struggle. And it has been struggling. And a lot of people have been hurting because of lack of transportation. So, thank you for your time letting me speak.
Thank you, Allison. Number twelve, please. Familiar face in the county administration building? Hi, Joe. Long time no see.
Good to see you again. I didn't bring statistics because I knew that they would be presented here, and they were done beautifully. Thank you so much.
Before you go further, Joe Rhodes.
Joe Rhodes, right. You used to spend a lot of time here. You know, it's a squeaky wheel. If you don't get up and you don't speak, then they kind of forget you. And I live in Oberlin, which I just adore. And I have family still here in Alaria. And I have different obligations here. So I've been very fortunate with health, but he knows I walk an awful lot, so that's helped me. But when I was taking the bus, coming in to see my family and different things here, we had a lot of the young men who were given a chance to have an education, go to community college, and they were given bus tickets. And they were extremely happy. They were talking on the bus and talking about their classes and things. And then towards the end, all they kept saying was to the bus driver, will there be a bus tomorrow? Can I get to the college tomorrow? Can I get to my job tomorrow? And all the bus drivers could say was, I don't know. I don't know. And then all of a sudden, we didn't have any buses at all. And that's what kept in my mind all the time. Because I can still get around, I have family. But about those people who couldn't get around. And, you know, it's when I come into Alaria, we go out to eat, we spend money. You know, and I get to wherever I'm going, you know, we spend money. And it's now to the point where every single one of my insurances, even though I don't use them, have all gone up. All my utilities have gone up. And I'm saying, okay. I did get a phone call, emergency. They had, my son had collapsed at work. And he was rushed to the Alaria Memorial Hospital. And they said, you have to get there as soon as possible. He had a heart attack. And I'm thinking, okay, how do I get there? How do I get there? So we did have a cab service there. And I called, and it did cost me $15. And I had $15 just to get there. And I didn't have $15 to get back. So by luck, you know, a family member was there, and I said, okay, I need to get back. And Mondays and Thursdays, I'm happy about that, but it really isn't enough. And then when I watch, I live in the same building with a lot of these women here, I see them getting on that bus for doctor's appointments every day of the week. It can't be just Monday and Thursday. Going to the hospital for tests, it can't be just Monday and Thursday. But I appreciate that. And I'm really happy from what I've heard here today that you are And I'm really happy from what I've heard here today that you are looking into it and that you are open to it. And that makes me happy because if I wasn't here, I wouldn't know and I'd be worrying more. But it's a capable hand, so you heard the testimony and thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. It's good to see you. Number 13. For those of you who might not know, Joe used to be Commissioner Vacy's administrative assistant, so we saw her on a daily basis. And this is Judy Wright.
Judy Wright with Zion Community Development Corporation in Oberlin. I know that many people have spoken. We have all shared our thoughts with regard to the tragedy and the travesty that is occurring particularly in Oberlin with regard to transportation. I don't think there is any one issue that is intertwined and interlinked more than transportation, particularly in Oberlin. It has currently an adverse effect on every other issue. Employment, education, healthcare, and housing. I don't know if anybody else spoke with regard to the foreclosure issue. But foreclosure in Oberlin is also tragically impacted by transportation because people can't get to their jobs. There are two major issues that impact foreclosure. One is employment and the other is sickness. And, and those obviously have an impact on transportation. 69 percent of the people who live in the southeast and southern area of Oberlin are living at or below the poverty level. And many of those folks are represented here today. And I just think that it's important that we all consider that we can watch things happen, we can wonder what happened, or we can make things happen. And if things are very important to us, we can make them happen because we do it every day in our lives. And so I would ask that the commissioners very, very strongly consider to make transportation a priority in Lorraine County. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Number 14.
Good morning. My name is Linda Arbogast and I am the Director of Oberlin Community Services. And I'd like you, thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate the words of Judy Wright and all the other folks who spoke today regarding the transportation issue. Oberlin Community Services is a small nonprofit and we serve Southern Lorraine County. We serve Oberlin, Wellington, and all the surrounding townships. And there are no bus services for the southern part of the county. The limited route that we currently have twice a week that is supporting the city of Oberlin is paid for locally by money that we raise locally. Oberlin Community Service has an operating budget of less than $300,000 and we are helping to fund the LCT routes that we currently have because we see it as an emergency assistance. And we are working with Eric Norberg at the city and some other, LMHA has supported us. I've been helping Mr. Norberg fundraise to keep these routes going. And I'm happy to do so because I see it as a critical assistance to low-income folks and everyone in the community. But it comes at a cost. And the money that Oberlin Community Services is going to be giving to transportation comes out of our emergency assistance budget, which means less people will be helped with utility assistance, less people will get food, less people will get housing assistance. Because we need transportation and two days a week isn't enough, but it's better than nothing, as has been mentioned. So I think that the reason that the LCT was cut for the southern part of the county was a numbers issue because there are fewer riders. But I think that it's important to know that rural communities need transportation also. And the numbers will be lower because it's rural. But don't forget the southern part of the county. We really do appreciate the commissioners and hope that you will remember us in the South. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. Number 15. I don't see number 15. How about number 16? Oh, well surely we haven't heard from everybody in the group. Anyone else who wishes to speak? You can grab a number.
Can I go up again?
We love you, but once is all you get.
My name is Barb Ramirez. I'm from Vermillion. I didn't necessarily come here to hear about all of the transit issues. But since I've been sitting here listening to all of it, I have a few comments I'd like to make. A lot of the people that have spoken are probably already collecting government monies and support for disabilities. I'm sure they get SSI or a lot of other governmental support that the public already pays them. And I hate to be a party pooper, but I don't think that it should be the responsibility of the entire society to pay. For a lot of people, like a lot of these people probably cannot drive and are unable to drive. But I know that there are people out there who can drive and have the ability to drive, but they just don't want to. I've known a lot of people in my own personal experience from my very own family who are able to drive and won't, won't go out and get a driver's license and be responsible for themselves. I think you really need to question this before you agree to any transportation issues, that there are a lot of people in that situation where they want to be dependent on society. They don't want to go out and get a driver's license or get a car or be responsible for themselves. I'm sorry, and I, like I said, I have people in my own family that are that way. I have no respect for them. When they are able to drive and they won't go out and get a car and, I mean, they have the money. They have the ability. They just want to be reliant on other people. I don't have respect for somebody like that. I had to get a driver's license. I had to get a car. I have to drive and be responsible for myself. You know, I'm sure there are a lot of independent companies or independents that would gladly buy buses. I'm thinking about that possibly for an issue for this area. You know, my husband's out of work right now. He could provide transportation for these people if they would pay enough, you know, for him to make wages or to afford to pay for the bus. You know, I don't see that, I don't see this issue as, as being something that the public should have to pay for.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? No. We're not going to debate the issue. You make your own mind up. No, go ahead.
Nancy London. You need my address?
Sure.
46984 West Hamilton Street in New Russia Township.
Okay, thanks.
First of all, in all due respect to the previous speaker, she made a tremendous number of assumptions about the people who spoke previously. She knows nothing about where their funds come from, whether they've received any sort of government assistance, whether or not that's relevant at all, but she has no idea. And just very briefly, I just wanted to reiterate something that someone else said previously, which is imagine if you didn't have your car keys. And, you know, that could happen to any of us due to a disability or due to, you know, a financial catastrophe. And that's all I'm going to say.
And thank you for your comments, Nancy. Anyone else want to speak? Just a comment I'd like to make. Early on, one of the speakers talked about the $14 million that was collected in sales tax and how that might better be spent by the individuals donating the money as opposed to giving it to the government. And this is just a point of information I want to make to you in case you are not aware of it because I have been places where people suppose that Lorraine County gets all that sales tax money. The sales tax rate in Lorraine County is 6.25 percent. Of that amount, 5.5 percent goes to the state of Ohio. They return some monies to us, as they do to all levels of government. But the amount that Lorraine County gets back on an assured basis is 0.75 percent. One half percent was initiated before I became a commissioner, so it's been in effect over 20 years. And the one quarter percent that was voted on for the addition and operation, construction of the county jail, probably in about 1994, after five times at the ballot box. So our, our rate that we get in Lorraine County is 0.75 percent. The other 5.5 percent goes to the state. I just wanted to make that information available to your brain so that you know that while 14 million might have been collected, and maybe that's what we got to the county, a whole bunch more went to the state and did not come back to us. And Commissioner Kokoski points this out often. We took a three and a half million dollar hit in the local government fund distribution in which year, please?
I think '06.
The population shifted in Lorraine County from more people living in the incorporated areas, i.e. cities and villages, than in the unincorporated areas, which is the townships. So they took from our whole distribution that year, three and a half million dollars.
Not just that year, year after year after year. It wasn't a one-time hit. It was a yearly hit.
Correct. But that year, they took it away from us and gave it to all the other children in our family. And we didn't get it. And townships.
And townships.
Okay.
And on top of that, some of the issues that need to be addressed, why we are in the situation that we are in, is not because of a problem with spending so much as a revenue issue. Like Betty said, the $3.5 million in local government, the $3.5 million a year that we're losing in our local government funds, we're now paying on the Justice Center to the tune of $1.8 million a year. About $6 million in interest income that we're not getting. So these are all the things that make up for the shape that we are in at the, today. But we have done a lot of things to cut costs and we are now seeing the benefit of those cuts that we've done over the last few years. You know, we've done massive layoffs. And when you lay people off, you still have trailing costs, unemployment costs, things that still cost the county money even though, you know, you, you make those cuts in those, in all of our departments. So we are now seeing the benefits of those cuts that we made. It was just, I don't know, maybe six months ago where we were told that we were going to be $2 million in the hole. You know, and then we found out we're going to have, oh, a $3.5 million carryover. And then it was a $5.5 million carryover. Now we're looking at a $7 million carryover. And I'm not sure who's sandbagging us, if it's the auditor or the budget commissioner, who it is that's telling us these, these numbers and making us make decisions based on the numbers that were given. But we're given bad information a lot of times. I agreed to have these hearings only, and I didn't realize it was going to be a transit hearing as far, instead of a tax hearing. But I agreed to have these hearings because I think the public needs to be aware of why we are where we are today. We have a new commissioner coming in and I thought he needed to be aware of why we are where we are today. And that is the only reason why I agreed to have these hearings. But I have no intention of enacting an emergency sales tax. I would be definitely willing to look at putting one on the ballot for issues such as, because where we are, we might be able to get passed this year and hopefully into next year, but we're not going to be able to do anything with transit with the way things are right now. So I'm hoping that when our new commissioner comes in and he sees the need and, you know, now we have a Republican and Democrat, it's not, you know, one-party-rule kind of thing anymore and hopefully he'll be able to persuade the other side that this is something that's needed and to hear the, you know, what's going on with people that need the transit system. And I know, I know how much it's needed. I remember when we had the hearings on just the transit alone and I sat up here in tears, hearing some of the stories of the people that rely on the transit system, so. But there, I hope that the people do get educated as to why we are in the situation that we are in right now. And it's not because of frivolous spending. It's because the revenues are not coming in and the price of doing business just has, has gone up. I mean, insurance alone went up from $1,200 per employee to $1,400 per employee. You know, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. We've tried to make cuts. We've tried to implement contracts on our unions. You know, unprecedented things that have never, I don't think have ever been done anywhere. We've tried to do some crazy things to try to make it work and it's just not, it's not getting us to where we need to be, so.
My turn?
Sure, go ahead.
Again, I appreciate everyone here from transit. Commissioner Blair's done a very good job.
Oh, they came on their own.
I know, but with notification. That's okay because transit's a very important part of having a good county. I've never questioned that. I've always been a large supporter. But these sales tax hearings are about our general revenue funds. For those of you who were here earlier, we cut our departments another 5%. We've had over 20% in cuts the last two years. We are curbing services that are mandated. And I was hoping some of those discussions would go that way. I appreciate Kirsten Hill. I've known her forever. I think she's since left us. But they run a very good, tight business, but they are able to, like any private sector business, you're not selling as much, you quit manufacturing as much. You have less employees. In our case, we have still, still provide the mandated services. We don't have the option of not operating an auditor's office or a commissioner's office or the judges or the prosecutor.
Or a jail.
Or an airport.
Not once you got one. You're sort of like stuck with it.
We tried to close it down, but they wouldn't let us.
Sort of like that Sugarlands song, "Stuck like glue," I guess. We can't get rid of the damn thing. I was hoping that some of these discussions would be based on the loss of mandated government services other than transit, which is a non-mandated service. But again, the sheriff left here without an opportunity to speak. He just absorbed a 5% cut. I don't know how many employees that is going to cost the sheriff. The courts have taken that cut. The auditor's office have taken that cut. The commissioners have taken that cut. We've all returned money to the general fund by being very frugal, but there are a lot of capital improvements happening. As everybody knows at home, if you don't take care of your house, the problems get worse. We have not fixed roofs. We have not fixed parking garages. We have not fixed sidewalks. There's a lot of safety issues out there that have to be attended to just with upkeep. And I'm hoping tonight's meeting and next week's meeting might focus more on the services that we're required to provide and not services that we're not required to provide, even though they are needed service, so. No offense, everybody here was talking about transit. The information was good for the public to hear because this is all televised. I think we're all aware of what the issues are. I've worked with Commissioner Blair and Commissioner Kokoski on transit. I'm part of the West Shore Commuter Rail. I think we've addressed that issue and I think we all know if a sales tax were to be passed, there would definitely be revenues reinstated at that department to return the services what they once were. But currently, it's a matter of trying to keep pace with the services we have to provide. Especially just coming back from Columbus, the cuts they're going to make to local government is going to severely harm what we have to provide. And whether we want to or not, they'll stick the taxing authority back on us locals to make up the shortfall as the government tries to balance their budget at the state level.
They're going to be devastating.
Correct. So I mean, I think our focus more needs to be going through these hearings is how we're going to address those issues and not necessarily just a single issue like transit. So if anybody else would like to speak about those type of issues, I invite you up here. You don't need a card. You don't need a number. And some of you sitting in the audience, I'm sure are here for other reasons other than transit.
Well, if you're talking about employment, because I need a job, there's no jobs.
We can't, we, the government doesn't necessarily, can't help you with that part. But it's a matter of providing services, those that we believe we don't need to.
What services are there? Tell me things that you're talking about.
Well, we can close a part of the jail, ma'am, and let them back out on the streets. The state's talking about doing that. We're leaving a prison population by ten percent. That's fifty-one hundred new people to hit the streets who should be incarcerated. Those are issues. There's the road patrol issues on the townships who don't have near the deputies out there protecting the citizens. They have no police protection whatsoever. Crime has gone up there. The sheriff left prosecutors two or three murders there in the past year, homicides in the township. We can talk about where the judges won't be able to... Where they won't be able to convict criminals, because there'll be no prosecutors to fill the courtrooms.
So, the criminals are more important than your average working people?
No, we're mandated, ma'am, we're mandated.
That's what county does, that's what we do.
That's what we do. Seventy percent of our budget goes to criminal justice. So, as we're talking about this, again, not to belabor the point, but the sales tax hearings are here for general revenue funds, which would include, if they were passed, additional dollars for transit also to make those services better.
Because transit has never been funded by anything else but general revenue funds.
Right. Because it doesn't pay for itself out of the fare box. And we got matching money from the feds to help us. When we, at one time, we're giving, what, a million, more than a million dollars towards transit? And that money was matched, so that's when, you know, we were, you know, there were a lot of buses on the roads, and we were doing a lot of good things, and people got used to those services. But, you know, when times get to the way they are right now, we have to focus on what's mandated. And one of the things that are mandated is, yes, the criminal justice system.
So, in our case, thank you, Commissioner, this board first came together in two thousand and five, we had a sixty-three million dollar approximately general fund, correct, Lisa? Somewhere in that range, oh-five? We're now working on a forty-eight million dollar general fund.
You're like seventy million.
No, actually, general fund expenditures, not the carryover money, but the actual expenditures. We're about sixty-three million dollars. Now, we're working on about forty-eight million dollars and trying to provide the same services. So, we have cut the size of government twenty percent. We're down over a hundred employees. And we're struggling, and we're looking forward to next year. That's why we took a million dollars out of this year's budget instead of appropriating and doing the five percent cuts to everyone. We put in a rainy day fund, not knowing what the state is going to do. And if they cut us more than that million dollars, we will have to have additional cuts and/or increased revenues, which might then put us in a position that we have to have a tax issue on the ballot.
David, you're finally going to talk.
Another Oberlin.
David Ashenhurst, Oberlin.
Is everybody here from Oberlin?
Well, Commissioner...
Go ahead, David Ashenhurst, you have the floor.
First of all, I'd like to point out that these are the people who voted for the sales tax the last time.
Thank you.
The only people that voted for it.
There weren't a whole lot.
What?
There weren't a whole lot.
No, but we passed it by more than sixty percent, and Amherst Township passed it by ten votes.
And the city of Lorraine passed it.
And the city of Lorraine passed it by fifty votes.
Right.
We had a margin. You see people who were willing to support a sales tax earmark for criminal justice services and safety services because they knew that that would free up resources in the general fund to do those non-mandated services. But we were supportive of that. Commissioner, I think it would be great if you'd get a bunch of people who didn't vote for it the last time, who can explain why they didn't. We're just explaining why we did last time and why we would again. And with respect, I mean, perhaps it is a situation where the hearing, you've all have been speaking at this hearing more than you'd often do at hearings, because normally the hearing is you hearing from the public. We've been hearing from you, but the people who voted against it haven't heard from you, because we're the people who voted for it the last time. So, I think the, I was not in town when the editorial came out in the Morning Journal that you've provided us. I would be very curious what response the Morning Journal got to that editorial, and if they, you know, if it would be sort of run again and people could respond to it. I, it's, to me, it's got a whole lot of misleading and misinformation in it. But I didn't see the paper, they don't put their letters to the editor, all of them online, and I, you know, can read some of those. But, overall, it seems to me, and I hope at six o'clock tonight, maybe you'll get some more people who would like to talk about the mandated services. But, to the extent that you're speaking at this, you are preaching to the choir. This is the group that wants it. We understand that you need it for those mandated services. We want you to get it for your mandated services so you can support the unmandated service of public transit. I think the whole point here, in terms of what you've heard so far, is we'd like you to figure out a way to get your mandated services funded, because we need one of your unmandated services to make any of the rest of this possible, so that people can pay the employment taxes, they can pay the property taxes. Seniors can get the services that are, that are being funded by, you know, perhaps federal funds. You've got services in the county that aren't paid for by the county, but the people who need them can't get to them. So, the plea here is to get this, but it's not to get transit. It's to get your sales tax, for whatever you have to use it for, so there's money available for transit.
You should have spoke first, David, and boxed it all up there, because that would have framed it prior to everybody else watching on TV, thinking it was a transit, you know, it was very good. It's exactly what it's all about. We have enough funds for general revenue accounts, mandated services. Any additional funds are then available to the non-mandated, transit being one of those. So, I mean, as we're going through this, and whoever happens to watch this program for an hour and a half or two hours sees that a lot of these issues still have to roll back to providing the mandated services we're required to do. If not, we just need a transit tax put on the ballot, and then it has to be supported and passed by the public, which it has failed in the past, correct, Commissioner Blair?
Three or four times.
Three or four times, there was no support.
No, that wasn't, that's not true. There was support, just not enough.
No, there wasn't fifty percent plus one percent, plus one support, so. Again, I'm done making comments, but I'm hoping as we go through this, we start talking about the mandated services are taking cuts. As I said, we just did a five percent cut, that's somewhere around a million and a half in personnel.
Okay, anybody else?
Can I say something, Commissioner?
Certainly.
I just wanted to mention, last week, we were down at the State Prosecutors Association, and there's a couple of counties that are actually farther on down the slide than we are, and we talked to what some of them are doing, and one of them mentioned, we talked about, we have to have the jail, but you don't have to have a detention home, so they actually closed their detention home. And what they have happening is that the juveniles are running around committing vandalism, they're joyriding, you know, they're not stealing cards, they just joyride around with them. And nobody's going to put them in an adult prison for doing that kind of thing. And there's, there's no punishment, there's no prosecution, because people can just go do that. I know businesses are somewhat reticent about sales tax, but, you know, they aren't going to be prosecuting, they're not prosecuting shoplifting, they don't have staff for that. You see a lot of senior citizens here, and now with the economy going bad, there's a lot of scamming of people from their investments. And prosecuting those kinds of things takes an immense amount of time by the sheriff's office and our office, and they're just, none of those things are being prosecuted, because all they have time to do are the murders, the rapes, you know, those kind of things. So, that's, that's where we're headed.
It's not a pretty picture. Anyone else? Thank you all for coming. I think we all learned a little bit more about each other's issues. We appreciate your attendance. I move that we adjourn.
Wow, we never get to do that.
Hang on, we have to close the hearing first, don't we? Don't we have to close the sales?
Close the public hearings.
Close the public hearings. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
You know, what'd you say, Jerry?
I make a motion to move the public, close the public hearing.
Second. Any further discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye, and then I move we adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
See you tonight.
Six o'clock. Okay, are we ready for six o'clock?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the second public hearing. Although this is not an official public hearing, it's just a hearing on the issues that have been advertised in the newspaper regarding the possibilities of a sales tax. This morning, we had about fifteen people who testified, offering their comments. And there are papers in the back, if you want to comment, we ask you to take one. They're numbered, and I'll call numbers, and then you put your name on it, and we'll call you according to number. The information that is in the back, the green-colored sheet, contains an editorial that was in the local newspaper suggesting ways that the county could more efficiently operate. And in the front of that is a two-page, well, it's four pages, prepared by our budget director, listing the things that the county actually has done in the past couple of years to eliminate expenses, and the approximate savings that are listed by our budget director total approximately eight million dollars. So, we've been working on saving money, we just apparently have not saved enough, because we still have more expenses than we have savings. At this morning's board meeting, we also adopted, I apologize, I've got several different papers here. We adopted appropriations for the year two thousand and eleven. Thank you, Ted. And these are, we'll, the total appropriations are forty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. I'll start again, I'm sorry. Forty-eight million eight hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And these included a five percent budget cut to all salary and P E R S accounts, with the exception of the following departments, workforce development, building inspection, prosecutors four D and four E, the domestic four D, the municipal courts, and the veterans. And they will be distributed, the salaries and P E R S are distributed on a quarterly basis. The rest of the items will be allocated for the entire year. So, that was done this morning as well. And if you picked up an agenda, it lists all the various components that we advertised, because we did not have a specific item in mind, but we were looking at the possibilities that might exist for the county. Having said all that, have I missed something? Okay, then. Who has the lucky number one? Anybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have them come up and say their name and address.
Well, having, and having no number one, then, if there's not a number two, anybody who would like to speak? Just come to the microphone and state your name and address, please. Don't be afraid.
You came here for a reason, guys, we want to hear them. For or against a sales tax?
Sorry, John, I didn't mean to make you a puncher, it's all right.
And may we need to, you could spell your name for...
Randy Newman, N-E-W-M-A-N.
Thank you, Randy, for the clerk, so she can...
I just got a couple of questions for you folks, actually. This is a public hearing, and we're the public, and we'd like to hear what we're going to do with this fourteen million dollars.
Which fourteen million?
That we're going to raise with the sales tax.
Well, I think there's one thing I forgot to say. May I?
Please.
The rate of the sales tax in Lorraine County at this time is six point two five percent. Five and a half percent of that collected goes to the state. Three quarters of percent stays with the county. One half is for general operating, goes to the general fund, and one quarter percent goes, was voted...
I'm aware of those numbers, Ms. Blair.
Okay, well, they don't generate fourteen million, that's why I asked you about fourteen million.
Well, that's what I want.
A half a percent would generate fourteen, approximately fourteen million.
A half of percent?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Guarantee it.
All right.
What we have under is twelve different options.
I understand that, sir, but there's no clarity there. What we're looking for is clarity. The public's becoming educated, and we want to know what's going on with our money. It's that simple. We don't, we don't come here to protest anymore. We're here, you said this morning that you have reduced the budget to forty-eight million eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars this past three or four years here. This fourteen million dollars gets twenty-six point seven percent increase. So, that twenty percent you've saved over the last four, you're getting back in one fell swoop.
That's a half, right?
That's for a half.
Okay, there's also, there's also the option for a quarter.
Okay, so you get thirteen percent of the, of the decreases you've done over the last four years. So, that half, again, you haven't done what we asked you to do.
Mr. Newman?
We've asked you to reduce the size of government.
Mr. Newman, if I can, I want some clarity there. In our general fund revenue, okay, is the forty-eight million dollars that we appropriated. On top of that was approximately six point seven million dollars. That was half of the last half percent sales tax. We split it into two years appropriations to open the doors.
The emergency sales tax generated over eleven months.
So, even though we have had approximately twenty-three percent in cuts across the board, in two thousand and seven, we had a sixty-three million dollar general fund. We did need the additional monies, and they were split, the fourteen million you're referencing, thirteen point four million, whatever it actually was, was split into open the doors in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven to help subsidize the jail and the prosecutor's office.
Okay, what I'm asking here mainly is to educate us on what this fourteen million dollars will do. What we, what we want to see is, I want to see it specifically, not just into the general fund. I want to see this kind of benefit law enforcement, I want to see this kind of benefit the prosecutor's office. I don't want to see it going to the general fund and get, and build a horse park out on the fifty-eight. Okay? I don't want to see it wasted again. It's that simple. It's my money you're asking for, it's my money I want to keep track of.
Okay, sir. Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Because I campaigned heavily last year for issue four, and it was only for the criminal justice. It was exclusively there to cover the courts, the prosecutors, the sheriff, and the jail. That's all it was going for. And we did have that outlined in our levy issue that went to the ballot under emergency. It was a criminal justice fund only, and Jerry can probably expound more on the specifics of that, because he's our legal person who works for the prosecutor's office. But that's where the money only went to. It didn't go, and you're talking about going to the sheriff and the jail and the prosecutor and the courts, that's where it was earmarked for, it couldn't go anywhere else. We couldn't use it.
That's a bad word, earmark, okay?
Oh, well, okay. But anyway, it was, it was specified by the ballot language only to go to the criminal justice system. So, it was explained through the issue four, and we have a bunch of...
Was, but we're talking about the future now, sir. The past, we can't change.
Correct, but we haven't passed anything yet, these are public hearings.
And that's what we're talking about, for the future.
Right.
If we're going to spend it, we'd like to know what it's going to be spent on prior to, as it may be going to the ballot box and deciding upon it. And we all know that when we put a tax increase in front of us, it's hard to sell it unless it has specifics anymore.
Correct.
When it goes to the general fund, it just doesn't fly.
And even when you have specifics, it's hard to sell.
Because we had specifics and it didn't sell. It sold in some areas, but not others.
Okay, but it's got to be sold better, obviously. That's as simple as that. That's all I want, I'd like some specific information, and this, this agenda you gave us is not specific, it just says to the general fund.
Commissioners, do we have copies of the tapes from the elected officials that came in over the last three weeks?
Oh, yes.
Sir, we've had public hearings for three straight weeks now, where every single one of our officials and departments came in, and they very specifically set forth their budgets, their expenses, and exactly...
I pay them, I don't see them.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, those, those meetings would have been recorded. And if, you know, we could get those too, you could take them home and watch them, and they very specifically set forth...
I can see black and white, I'm a numbers guy. I can see black and white, a lot easier than I can hear about a budget or talk about a budget. I can see it in black and white. And that's all the people want to see, they want to see it in black and white. We don't want to see red, like y'all don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Hyde, H-Y-D-E, I'm from Wellington. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. Actually, starting my sixth year down there on village council.
Jeff, could you speak a little louder in the, in the audience, they're having trouble hearing you.
Okay. Jeff Hyde from Wellington.
Got that part.
I'm a resident, and I'm starting my sixth year on village council down there. I'm just here to ask, have you made the decision yet? I'm a little behind. Is it actually going to be imposed, or is it going to go to the vote? I'm a little behind. Is it actually gonna be imposed or is it gonna go to the vote?
We have not made a decision regardless. Uh, this is a public hearing. We have another public hearing next Wednesday, the fifteenth. And after that, then we will make a decision about how we're going to do or what we're going to do or not do.
Okay, then I guess mine's pretty clear. Um, I do know the money's needed desperately. I've seen the, all the budget cuts. I watched all the people come up and talk about, you know, the department heads, the judges. I watched all that. I know we need the money. I just really don't think it's right to impose it. I, my, my, my thing is, put it to the vote of the people and that may not be what you want to hear, but I think if the people soundly say no, they're not behind this, they can't support it, they can't afford it. Um, it's not, it's not a Democrat thing. It's not a Republican thing. It's not a township thing. It's not a city thing. I just think if I did this in the village of Wellington, oh my goodness, it would be crazy. I don't care what the amount is. I understand the mandates. I understand Columbus coming to you and saying, you need to do this. You need to do that.
They never say need, Jeff. They always tell us we have to do this, have to do that.
And, and they don't, and they don't send the check to support. I understand that. I really just urge you to stop and think. Put it to a vote. And that, that's all really I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks for coming and thanks for serving your council.
Yeah. Jeff, I, I just, just to talk about what you just said, um, Ms. Blair suggested that we have these sales tax hearings and possibly impose a sales tax. I have not at all been in favor of imposing another sales tax. I believe we need a sales tax and like you said, I think we should put it to the vote of the people, which hopefully when, when Mr. Williams comes on board, he'll also see the need um, and be willing to, to put it on the ballot for the voter's approval. And my reason for going along with having these sales tax hearings was two reasons, to get the public informed as to where the needs are, um, if we should have a sales tax in, uh, increase, where that money will go. We have a new commissioner coming on board. I thought he needed to, um, get a prize as to, you know, where we stand with our budget and, you know, what, what it means without the sales tax, what it means with the sales tax. So it, it takes a unanimous board for it to be imposed and I, I've already told, you know, I've already come out, uh, publicly stating that I will not be in favor of, uh, imposing it as an emergency. Even though I know we need it, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, uh, willing to do that.
Anybody else? Commissioner-elect, Tom Williams, welcome.
I just wanted to talk to you, Lori. Thank you for the support on waiting until I get in. Mr. Kallo, I'm hoping that you will consider this as well. And just wait till I get in so all three of us can get together, talk about the budget and decide if we're gonna put it on the November ballot. I've talked to a lot of people during the campaign. They don't want the sales tax increase as far as being forced on them. I think if you go through and you do it, it's gonna give us a negative image at the county commissioners. And I just hope that you will listen to what you're hearing here today, vote no on it. And when I get in on January third, we can start talking about the numbers and work together. It's not, like, uh, one person said, it's not about Democrats or Republicans. It's about getting results. I want to work with you guys, but, uh, please vote no on this. We don't need another negative, um, mark against us, so.
I know you sat down with Lisa Hobart, our bu, our budget director and you, you're trying to get acclimated to how serious our budget issues are and how complicated they are, I'm sure.
Yeah, uh, with, with the Oracle system, which I'm familiar with, I went through, I did see some areas that I have concerns on. Uh, one of the areas just being not a big deal, but, uh, supplies. You know, I see a lot of money going there, but I want to talk to you, um, all three of you, talk to Lisa and talk to Mr. Cordez as well. But I think right now is the time for us to move on, wait till I get into office and then make a decision together. Ms. Blair, no disrespect, but you're leaving after twenty years. Congratulations on that. But it should be Lori's role, Ted's role and myself. It's the budget that we're going to be working on next year and you're putting a negative image on the county commissioners, so, thank you.
With all due respect, the appropriations for next year have already been laid out. So to indicate that I don't have a part in it is not quite right.
Well, I'm not saying that you don't have a part in it, but I'm saying that the people have spoken against it. They said no twice and it's a negative image. And Ms. Blair, you're gonna continue to give a negative image and you're going to hurt the chance of it just getting, um, approved in November.
Well, Tom, not to interrupt, but at this point, we can't impose a tax.
Right.
That's done. We know that's not going to happen, so basically now we'll go through, and I knew that going into these things. We never had any discussions otherwise, but at least here it's an information part. After we did, during and after the appropriations for two thousand and eleven. Commissioner Blair knows the need. She has her twenty years of experience. She's been here. She's been through this plenty of times. But I mean basically now and it's a good time for you
Right.
to see what they're going through and the hearings are being held.
And just...
Well...
I don't know what that means.
Well, I appreciate it.
Not by the Mayan calendar.
And just, just as...
I appreciate it, but I, what I've been hearing Ted is, or Mr. Kallo, is that there's already committees being formed to try to defeat the emergency sales tax. And I'm glad that you're coming out and saying that it's not gonna be done this year. People, people are hearing it and they're upset about it and, um, I'm glad to hear that. So thank you and...
And just as a point of information, uh, the first year I was here as a commissioner, and how would you like to face this? We imposed an emergency sales tax and there was a commissioner who was not in favor of it, but, uh, we didn't have much choice at that point in time. But what we did was, while we imposed it, we also put it on the ballot for that November. So we invited the, the public to vote for it. We helped the town, uh, the county survive that year and it only survives because they could collect that tax. And, um, they decided that we couldn't keep the tax, which was fine. They had their say. But I also want to point out to you, that was a quarter percent tax and we went back to the, uh, public five times before they allowed us to keep that quarter percent. And that was for the construction and operation of the jail and there was a million dollars waiting for us at the state to help with that jail. So I, it just, a little history goes a long way.
Well, history is important, but the thing I want to point out is twice they, you did the emergency sales tax...
No, once.
Well, the, uh, tax increase on here and it's been defeated.
Right.
And let's just remember that people, it's hard times right now. We have to live within our means. We got that six million dollars that's going in for next year, so we do have that. So it's not like we're gonna be turning the electric off right yet.
No. And, and my concern actually is not for this coming year. My concern is for two thousand and twelve. That's, that's our big issue. That's where, you know, that's where the rubber's gonna hit the road.
Right.
And we're gonna, that's why I want you to be involved and, and, you know, dig in deep. I mean, you don't have the luxury of, you know, getting your feet wet and seeing how things go like Ted and I did because it wasn't crucial and critical at, when we first got here, but it is critical now, so...
Yes. Well, thank you for your time and Mr. Kallo, that's Kukowski. I look forward to working with you and starting a new year. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else?
He, he brought up a good point as far as the, uh, and I said this earlier, I believe, uh, today. The voters rejected the sales tax twice, but what really, really got me was to see the city of Illyria and the city of Lorraine lose their tax, um, issues. You know, and that's people's, that's their, their public safety. That's their, their police and their fire and their streets and their parks. You know, things that really are so close to home. And when I saw that, I thought, well, if they don't care about their own city, they're not gonna care about what's going on in the county. Our job here mainly is to keep the peace. We, you know, our, our budget, over seventy percent of it, is for the justice system. So that's, that's our job is to, is to keep the county safe. And, um, when we did put the levy or the, uh, tax increase on, it was dedicated just to safety. And, and the people didn't seem, see the need for it. They, they sold it. We sold it. Uh, Mr. K, I was, I had a issue. I was in the hospital for a while, so I missed a little bit, uh, quite a bit of it, actually. But they worked very, very hard and I thought the easiest people that would have, um, passed the sales tax would have been those in the townships because that's who it was gonna affect the most. You know, that was gonna be their, their, uh, road patrol. I thought the hard sell was gonna be in the city of Lorraine. And, you know, the people that you would think would be the hardest hit by, you know, they have the, the highest unemployment and things like that. They passed the sales tax. Amherst Township passed the sales tax. So you, you just never know, but we're gonna have to do something. I mean, we, we're gonna get by, but it's, I mean, I, I, the safety of our, our deputies out there, I'm not happy with that. The, the safety of our residents, I'm not happy with the way things are. We're just very lucky that nothing, nothing bad has happened to this point. And the meeting that we had earlier with the transit, I mean, we are down to, what, two, two buses running?
Four routes.
Yeah, four routes. It's not acceptable. Uh, you know, there's so much more need out there than that, but at this point, we have to focus on our mandated services and, uh, we know we can do better. We've done better. But you can't do it without money and, and we don't have the money to do the things that we, we need to do.
Commissioner Kallo and I attended the, um, County Commissioners Association, um, conference in Columbus. Are you going to talk about that?
I'm waiting for the opportunity. I didn't get a chance to.
Well, I didn't see anybody else coming forward. Is anybody else wanna...
You're running the meeting.
Well, I'm just talking. I talk a lot. Anybody else wanna comment? Please come forward.
Commissioner, why, he's coming up. If I could just clarify something. Commissioners have to conduct these hearings to even consider doing any kind of a sales tax, whether it's putting it on the ballot or whatever they do. So people should not, uh, take the inference that just because they set up this hearing that it means they're going to impose the tax. They have to do this in order to do anything. And the reason they put so many things at one time was so that we didn't have to go out and expend the monies to advertise every separate issue they wanted to consider. So instead of having twelve publications and twelve hearings and all that expense, they just decided, let's put something out where we consider all the possibilities that we think we might remotely want to do and have it all done in one time and save the money on, on doing that. So, just so you don't get the idea that they, they have to impose or not impose. They are just having these hearings so that they will now be, have the possibility of any time next year considering whether or not to enact one or any of these taxes.
Thank you for that clarification, Jerry. It makes it more understandable, I believe. Yes, sir.
Yes, um, I'm Ken K from La Grange, Ohio. First time I've ever been to a hearing of this nature and I'm not well-educated totally on, uh, your budget and where your expenses go, but it only makes sense what Tom's saying. If you're gonna have some fresh blood in there and some new ideas, and no disrespect to you, Ms. Blair. I've been retired and, you know, the young guys threw me out and they couldn't wait to run the place too, so...
Amen.
But they did come up with some good ideas, I must admit. So I guess all I'm trying to say is, please hold off on any tax increases and, you know, let, 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 let Tom come in. Let him present to the people with, with you as a group and, and go forward from there. But again, too, I think what you're saying about the attempts of trying to pass this two times in a row uh, and the people not passing it, maybe, maybe you get some people to volunteer some time to come in, really take a look at it and come up with some ideas on how to market it a little bit better. Just an idea.
Good thought. And did you understand what Jerry had to say about, uh, the hearings that we're holding?
Yes, but I'm still of the belief that if you really wanted to, you would try to impose a, an, a half a percent increase?
Not really. I mean, the, the high revised code stipulates how the county can initiate a sales tax. There are various code sections and they tell us how to do it. We have to advertise and then hold these public hearings. And that, that's how we are here tonight.
Okay, I was under the belief that you could actually impose...
Uh, we, we could if we had...
We could, but it would have to be a unanimous board.
Okay, and I'm just trying to keep that unanimity from, or unanimous vote from happening or...
You don't want us to get along, huh?
No, no. It, it really does, you know, Ms. Blair, it, it really goes back to you have a new person coming on board, let him take the blame for it or, like, you know...
Yeah, whatever goes bad from here on out, it's gonna be your fault.
Well, now you know how it's gonna be, Tom.
No, I, and I'm sure you wouldn't want something, something like that to happen and, uh, but I'm just saying, you know, you might as well let the, uh, fresh blood in and, and let's come up with some ideas and, you know, nobody wants to go without the, uh, you know, they don't want, uh, an officer not to be protected or a fireman, uh, herd or your snowplow crew, especially on nights like tonight, working overtime and, and maybe working more hours than they should, but, uh...
Well, see, there, there, here's some education. We don't have a fire department.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I know, I, I just...
And the snowplow is not done by us. It's done by Ken Carney, who is our county engineer. He does all of our snowplowing.
And it's a motor vehicle.
Yeah, that does not come out of general fund, so...
What about the parks?
No.
No, that's Lorraine County Metro Park. So our, our big thing here is... The Justice Center, that building across the street over there, that's, that's our main, our main thing.
Okay, I did admit I had some learning to do about...
Keeping the bad guys off the streets in the jail. That's our...
Okay, now, why don't you give them the maximum so you don't have to rearrest them and prosecute them some more?
Well, Betty just wants to taser them all.
Actually, can I...
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just wondering.
That's an opening, though. That's absolutely perfect. Uh, as Commissioner Blair said, we were in Columbus Sunday and Monday for our association meetings. And Monday morning, the first meeting we attended was with Chris Widener, who's the new, uh, finance chairman for the state senate. And he passed out the general revenue issues and what they're going to deal with when it comes to budget cuts coming up this year. And they also did a handout, the Center for Community Solutions, if you Google it, the report's there. No quick fixes for Ohio government and bipartisan. And the issues being that they're going to work on, uh, off the bat is changing workers' comp totally. We're one of two states left in the country who still have a government one. Getting rid of that and making it privatized. They're going to hit education, uh, heavily. Uh, and those are, you know, the broad-based ones, corrections, which you spoke about, keep them in longer. Actually, the mandate is, is to lower our prison population by ten percent. There's currently fifty-one thousand residents in our penal institutions. To put fifty-one hundred of those back out on the streets and leave them for the locals to handle.
Yeah, and that's not good.
Pardon me?
Oh, you've heard that before.
A lot of it is that. It's unpaid, unpaid child support.
And taxes, correct.
Unpaid child support, felonies. It's marijuana, exactly, low-level drug. They're gonna, fifty-one hundred back out on the streets to lower their costs, which is gonna, we're gonna have to absorb that, let's be honest. They come back out here, they're going to cause issues. Uh, but the major one that they brought up was, in their proposal, three or four different times, county government's third largest funding revenue stream is called local government fund. It's a return of money that's paid down to the state out of our five and a half percent sales tax and we get a portion of that returned to us to operate county government. Our portion's about four point six, four, four point seven million dollars. It's a good portion of our budget. Uh, and their proposals are anywhere from a ten percent cut to a total elimination next year.
Of the rebate. What's rebate?
There you go. A rebate's good. The whole government fund is a rebate from state government, uh, monies we've paid back to us as revenue.
So why are we sending it?
Pardon me?
Why are we sending it?
Well, it's the state's sales tax of five and a half percent. You don't have much of a choice. They take it. So you send it down or they send you a portion back for operation. It's a little bit different when you're up here, cause we don't send the checks. But that, those are the issues... Mr. Newman, can you let me finish, please? You're not at the microphone. I'm trying to respond to what he's had to say. Uh, but when you're saying not knowing where our budget and what we actually cover, do or don't do, and you said the snowplowing, the fire and stuff, county government, what we do is, we operate the courts under our general revenues, which is domestic and court of common pleas. We operate the county prosecutor's office, which is all the prosecutors. We operate the county clerk of courts in relationships to the courts, not to the title stuff. You have a title of self-funding when you do a transfer, you know, when you buy a car, sell a car. Uh, we have the county jail. We have the county sheriff's department, which is the road patrols, the deputies. We also have the recorder's office, which is whenever a transaction, a sale of property, recording of, uh,
Deeds.
veterans.
Deeds.
Deeds, uh, DD two-fourteens for veteran, you know, those type of operations. We have the treasurer's office, who collects all of our taxes and does our investments. And then we also have the auditor's office, along with the commissioner's office. If that helps you, is the, what we actually do.
Yeah, it does clarify and I think to a certain extent, like I admitted, you know, I'm still learning some of the facets of, of law. Yeah, it does clarify and I think, to a certain extent, like I admitted, you know, I'm still learning some of the facets of, of law. But at the same token, too, I think I was trying to portray anybody in public service that is trying to help is somebody you don't wanna go, you know, you don't want them to not be in a safe situation when they're protecting us
Right.
from, uh, possible harm. But I thank you for your time and
Sure, thank you.
Um, again, just endorsing what Tom said, it, it won't hurt to just give it till, you know, four weeks away.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you came. Jerry, um, our timeline to, um, just put, put it on the ballot, not as an emergency. We have until when to do that? June?
Should be June to put it on November ballot.
Yeah, if you're, for, for the November ballot, right.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time.
We have plenty of time to actually put it on the ballot, okay.
Anyone else who wants to comment? You have a? You have someone there, Joyce, that wants to comment? Oh, okay, all right. Anyone else?
I see some other faces that I've never seen before. Did you wanna come up and speak?
Please ask questions. It's a lot easier answering questions than it is just sitting here listening.
No? Come on in. You have to come up there, yeah. Don't be afraid.
Well, make your friend come up with a question.
I'm just wondering how much it would cost, uh, if, if you guys gotta review all the signs, like, with the commissioners' names on it, that you see everywhere. You know, there's probably a lot of money that goes into, like, the advertising of that. I was wondering how much that costs and if you're gonna change all the signs now with the new commissioner.
Absolutely. His, his name will go on. There's not a whole lot. There's the airport sign and the ugly, the ugly airport sign. You sure you even want your name on that?
Actually, I did. I did ask Mr. Cordez to hold off and putting my name up there.
Okay.
And, um, don't worry about it. Keep this player up there unless there's some type of state issue.
Oh. Um, actually, the majority of those kinda signs, sir, did not come out of the general fund. Those were, um, most of those paid for solid, from solid waste. So it didn't come out of our, our funds.
Other comments? Other people wanting to comment? Questions. It's a public hearing. It's when the public gets to be heard. No? We can't hear you if you don't talk.
Is the money reduced?
Please.
You earmarked.
You, you have to come up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Question.
Okay. Just state your name and address.
My name's Betty Poland. I live at twenty-one hundred West River Road in Alariah. If the money, um, is going to be earmarked toward the cer, toward, um, the safety, um, divisions and departments, is, will the general fund or their portion of the general fund be reduced? And, um, or, or will you be able to reduce it or will the amount that's in the general fund now be used or it won't be touched? It'll still be, um, uh, the, 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 the new revenues will be increased. Does that make, I guess that makes sense?
Yes, it makes sense. It's a good question. It hasn't been determined. Do you wanna address it differently?
Well, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
My thinking being is the additional revenues would go to restore the departments in the criminal justice. That's how we talked about it a year ago. So I, again, not knowing if we're with Mr. Williams on board, so I don't know what his thinking would be. But what we were gonna do was restore. That would be the twenty deputies that the sheriff's department laid off, twelve full-time, eight part-time. It would be restoring. I believe there were, Jerry, in the prosecutor's office, we lost three prosecutors, two support staff. Was it three or four? I don't remember. Three or four. You just lost another one recently. Just left yesterday, the day before. We lost another prosecutor. Uh, so it would go and what's happened in the Court of Common Pleas, they have used up what was called special revenue funds, uh, foreclosure monies, fine monies, monies that they received. They've moved employees over to that, so they, which they're out of that money now. Uh, put those employees back in the general. So restore most of the services that we lost. It would also free up a small portion for our general fund also, because we only needed about five-point-seven million dollars a year to restore all those services. And, uh, like, last, it was six-point-seven million dollars per quarter percent of total money. So if, let's say, a half a percent like issue four was, and we split it over two years, or if you just did a quarter percent, there was about a million dollars there that were, was not earmarked or specified. Not to use the word earmark, Randy. She used it first again. But it would be used to restore some of those services. Transit, our problems with the airport, because we're stuck with the airport. Whether we wanna keep it or not, we can't close it. We've gone through those issues with, uh, the FAA. Uh, so it would restore some of those. We would hope to, some of the departments. If you look through the green sheet, ma'am, I don't know if you got this from the back of the room. If you read through it, that'll show you all the cuts. Uh, so it would restore some of that, so we can have some semblance of getting business done that we need to get done, 'cause right now everything is on a slowdown. Uh, and the problem with county government is it's not like your city government where you see your police and your fire every day. Uh, we perform services that aren't directly the constituent a lot of times. So you don't see what we're doing. So a lot of, uh, money, for example, in our county budget, it's not mandated under community development to have what's called a CHIP program, Community Housing Improvement Program. But we have to have available dollars. It's a federal program. Uh, a senior who's on a low income meets the poverty guidelines, low-income guidelines, her furnace blows up in the middle of the wintertime. She doesn't have the funds to fix that furnace, so by emergency, we go in and put a furnace in there for her, so she has heat in her house. Well, what then happens? We have to advance that money and within a year or two, the feds reimburse us. So there's that rolling amount of capital, and I think this year it was about three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars we have to have available for those type of.
Money in, money out.
Right, money in, money out. So it's not money that we don't receive back. It's not money that we have. It's not like this, when we get the emergency, the feds write us a check and say, go change your furnace. We have to do it, pay the vendor. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So it's, it's those type of programs that people aren't quite familiar with that we do. So when you're saying, is it only go, is there extra money? I don't know if it's called extra money, but it gives us the ability to meet the programs and get matching federal dollars in here to do more for the citizens.
Well, Ms. Blair talked about the quarter percent that we, they finally passed after numerous attempts, the quarter of a percent for the jail. But that does not cover the jail operations. The general fund has been supplementing the jail over the last, I don't know, I don't even know how many years, forever.
Forever.
Long time.
About six million, was it? Or four-point-five million this year, last year?
Yes.
It's, it's substantial amount of money. And, um, did I talk about some of the reasons why we are in the situation that we are? I can't remember if I talked about it tonight or earlier. Um, we talked about local government fund. And in two thousand and six, we lost about three-point-five million dollars. And that wasn't just in two thousand and six. That's year after year after year that we've never been able to recoup.
That's because generally the smaller revenues, I assume.
No, it was a population shift, uh, from the counties, the county to the cities. So instead of the ci, or the county getting the money, the cities and the townships got that portion of money. So we haven't been able to recover from that three-point-five million, three-point-six million dollars hit there. Plus, they're talking about additional local government, um, fund hits to the county also. Uh, we started paying on the Justice Center to the tune of a one-point-eight million dollars over the last couple of years. Our interest income is down six million dollars. So all these things taken into account is not even, you know, there's no way you can recover from those millions of dollars in hits to your revenue. I mean, we've been cutting and cutting and cutting. And just recently, we've been seeing the benefit of the cuts that we've made. When you, when you lay people off, which is a very hard thing to do, to lay people off when they have no, you know, they did not do anything to deserve that other than the fact that there's no money to, to pay them. But there's still trailing costs. There's unemployment costs. There's, you know, things that you still have to pay after the fact. But now that the, the people have been laid off for such a time, we're now starting to see the benefits of those cuts that we made a year and two years ago. So that's how we now luckily have some money going into next year that we didn't anticipate.
And you don't see, of course, who, who can, um, for, forecast the future? You don't see an increase in revenues as the economy recovers?
Even, even in good times, the, the amount of sales tax never really fluctuated a whole lot. It was only, you know, a couple, a couple of percents here and there. So, um, was it, it was like seven million, now it's six million. But that's nothing compared to, you know, six million dollars in interest income that you lose in one year. How, you, you can't make that up.
I suppose that, it's hard to, you know, for the general public, I think it's hard for them to see where all the money goes. I know that you have your.
Well, like we said, over seventy percent goes to the justice system. Twenty-two million dollars of our forty-million-dollar budget is salaries. Twenty-two million, and that's not even including PERS and workman's comp and things like that. So we are service. We're service-oriented, providing service to our residents. And it, the majority of our, our budget goes to salaries.
How about your healthcare?
Healthcare went up, um, we were paying, yeah, it went up thirteen percent.
Have you adjusted the benefits?
Yes, we've, we have almost like ninety-nine-point-nine percent of our employees paying ten percent of their premiums.
And the deductibles?
There's deductibles, yes. There's like a two-hundred-dollar deductible.
They all went up. We changed the plan three years ago.
You know, a lot of companies now are at five thousand and three thousand deductibles.
Yeah. We've been itching our way up, um, having the employees pay a share of that. It used to be like thirty-five dollars. That, that's all they had to pay. It was very inexpensive. So the majority of our bargaining units and, and non-bargaining are paying ten percent premiums, plus co-pays.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for your questions. Good questions.
Anybody else?
And you said you weren't gonna talk, Chad.
Oh, he just couldn't, couldn't resist anymore.
Give a politician a microphone.
I won't keep you up.
You're all right, fine.
Uh, my name's Chad Parsons. I'm elected official in Sheffield Township. I'm here to say, as township, we see the effects. Just as Lori, you said, you see the cha, the effect on you financially, we see it on crime spiking. We have an increase on crime in our townships since the sheriff's patrol's been let go. Uh, you had to do budget crunches, I understand. So I'm here to say, just as the budget's being, uh, crunched and you're, you're up there, having to lay off people, and I, I, I'm thankful you're, you're doing it and not us. But, um, that being said, we have a situation where we, there's maybe a couple deputies to run the county. Um, and without the sales tax, and without restoring what we've had in the past, it's just gonna get rougher.
Absolutely.
Um, just as, you know, we're gonna read about this in the Journal or the Chronicle tomorrow, so are the criminals. They're gonna read about it. They're gonna see that there's no police patrol, or there is police patrol, but it's scarce. And, you know, I guess as a smart criminal, what are they gonna think?
Well.
Where am I gonna target? I'm not gonna go to Lorraine. They, they still have their police. I'm not gonna go to Alariah. I'm gonna go to the townships. And we don't want it, you know, and the only way we could stop it is supporting the sales tax. I agree with everybody here. It should go to a vote of the people and let the people decide. And I hope that they see the same effects that we see in Phil.
Mm-hmm.
And I will be one to help you, to educate, and that's why I'm here, is to educate myself on what you guys are doing before I can educate the constituents of my townships.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chad.
Chad worked very hard on issue four.
Yeah, he did.
All three of the trustees did in Sheffield Township.
The other thing, we're, we're not facing this situation at the moment, but we were for a long time, and the fact that we had a jail overcrowding issue going on and on and on. So the, the criminals were also snubbing their nose, thinking, well, arrest me, what are you gonna do with me? You don't have anywhere to put me. So, you know, between the fact that we have, you know, less deputies, but we do have room in our jail now, so look out, people.
Jerry?
First, Betty'll taser you, then we're gonna put you in jail.
Yeah, I'll, I'll slow you down so we can catch ya.
To follow up with that, Commissioner, this morning, I mentioned that we went down to the State Prosecutor's Association and met with all the other prosecutors. And there are a couple of counties down there that are even worse off than we are. We were asking them, what are they doing? And as the commissioners mentioned, we're mandated to keep the jail open, but you are not mandated to have a detention home. And they just flat-out closed their detention home. And what that meant is, unless the juveniles committed a serious enough offense to be remanded over as an adult, there was no wa, nowhere to put them anyplace. So they were out joyriding, you know, not stealing people's cars, just joyriding them. And nothing was happening to them. Vandalism, um, they were talking about the shoplifting. You know, I know a lot of business people don't like sales tax, but they said, you know, they, they don't, they can't handle stuff like shoplifting. Uh, people that scam seniors of their investment savings, and that takes a lot of time for investigation. You know, they, they had to reduce their prosecutions to things like murder and burglaries and assaults and rapes and drugs and anything less than that, they just said, go home.
Anybody else?
So we can make cuts. There are more cuts we can make. It's just the quality of life you want.
Yeah, that's for sure. Anyone else? It is now ten, almost ten minutes to seven. Going once, going twice. Commissioners, you done? I move we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair? Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kekowski?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.